And we paid dearly for rock when we had to put rock in there for it to build on, right? Because that was a change order.
What do you want to do with the dirt?
Oh, I'd like to see it gone.
Well, if the field's are ever done, you're gonna need that. You're gonna need, you're gonna need every other of that stuff. That's why, that's why it's staying. Now, you haul that dirt off, or the county can haul that dirt off, or pay the contractor to haul that dirt off, and then somebody will have to haul it back in there, or shoot a whole lot of rock.
I understand, but it looks to me like you'd be building on a lot of topsoil.
No. What you do is, we had taken, you take and push the topsoil back, take that dirt that's there, get it, put it in there, put the topsoil back on it. A couple of those things, there's just two or three inches that have raised, then you just put the topsoil on top of what's there.
I got a question. All right, go ahead. How many change orders have we executed on these two contractors?
To increase the cost?
Change orders, yeah, to change the cost.
None. It's still the same thing. Everything's been within the contingencies of the, it will be. There might be a penny or two.
Anything else, board members?
Everybody gonna be finished working, I mean, they're finished working now, or they're still doing little things while the fire marshal's doing his thing.
No, they're still in there working. I mean, there's still rubber base going on, the painters are still touching up walls and everything. And part of their motivation to get out of there is, the week before school starts, they'll have to have their background badge checks current. And if you have never done that, that's pretty much motivation to work real hard the next couple of weeks and get out of there. Because it's tough. They can't work on schools unless they've got a TBI background check with students there.
Speaking of July the 27th, I'd like to hear about opening day. Principal Hugh, Thomas, thank you so much. Planning Committee did meet and had a good round of discussions, six board members were there. Principal Hugh, would you like to? Is Aaron here, Tom?
Aaron didn't stay. He went on home, but I'm here, so if you all have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them. And so I'm Jordan Hughes, I'm the principal of the Boones Creek School. Our plan for the big grand opening will be July 27th, and it will be 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And so I'm just gonna kind of go over some things. For instance, who we're gonna invite. We planned to invite Tony Street, Tommy Burleson, all current and former board members, all current and former county commissioners, former mayor, current mayor, Jim Harland, state representatives, state senator, US Congressman, director of schools, Governor Lee and Commissioner Schwinn. So that, we want to make sure that we extend invitation to each of those individuals. Also, we've invited parents, and this information went out on the back of all the report cards of the students that were currently at the elementary and at the middle school. We have spoken at it at all of our closing ceremonies, at the end of the elementary's year and the middle schools. We put it on our website, we put it out in social media, we're trying to get the news to kind of run multiple stories on it, so I've got some interviews coming up. I'm gonna try to get it back out there on the news again, so we're gonna really try to get a good turnout. We've sent letters to all of the community businesses that are around the school. We've sent, I think, over 50 letters, and we've invited these businesses to come set up at this open house. They are welcome to set up a table, participate in this grand opening. And in that letter, we asked that they would participate by purchasing a banner to help fund the school and what we need. So it was kind of like, you get to come represent your business, please help us as well. So we just want to make it a fun ceremony. We'll also have food trucks, Kona eyes, kettle corn. We could potentially have local restaurants or local churches cook some hot dogs. We just want it to be a real grand celebration. We will have programs printed for this day, approved by Dr. Flannery. We will start with a 10 a.m. flag raising ceremony by the ROTC from Daniel Boone High School, and we'll thank Women Life for donating the flag at that point, because they've donated our flag. And then we'll have our speakers. For the speakers, we'll have, Mr. Christian's gonna be the emcee, so he's just gonna introduce people as they come to speak. Dr. Flannery's gonna speak, and Mr. Irvin's gonna speak. Got him down.
I've just found out that I'm going to the beach that Saturday.
You'll have to postpone that trip.
I'm going to the beach. You all, you go on the beach, it will be fine. I knew you would be. You didn't want to see me in my muck boot suit, like?
We'll invite Mayor Grandy to speak, and I'll say a few words. We'll have Ms. Lindsay Hatley, she's over the PTO, we're gonna ask her to speak as well, and Mr. Harland, who is over the Quest Grants, and then Mr. Tony Street. And we are asking that the speeches are less than five minutes, because right now, what it's gonna look like is, we wanted to have the ribbon around kind of the front of the school, so we'll have chairs and tents set up at the very front of the school. And we're working on numbers now, we're working on getting those chairs and tents. Our plan B, if it rains, will be the gymnasium, and it seats a thousand people, so we should, we should be able to accommodate, but we would rather have it outside, and we want to keep the speeches short so that we can allow for everyone to participate in the other activities. So after the speakers, we're gonna have the ribbon cutting, where each school board member will cut the ribbon that has been tied around the entrance, so that'll be, that'll be fun. We will have someone in a bear suit for photo ops.
Bear suit or a bar suit?
Bar. It's a bar.
You know, whatever you want to call it. There'll be someone there in a suit for photo opportunities. We will also have Dr. Adams reach out to the media to ensure that we have coverage. We're also gonna publish a public agenda. We're not gonna have, you know, everything on that agenda, but we just want to have a general idea, so they know what's gonna happen there. We, like I said, we've communicated the event through multiple, multiple facets. There will be t-shirts for sale. We wanted to offer students and parents the opportunity to get some Boones Creek swag or Boones Creek gear, so there will be t-shirts, water bottles, pop sockets, earbuds, and it'll all be a fundraiser, so all the money will go directly back to the school to help us fund what we need for that beginning year. We are gonna work with maintenance and Dilla Taylor for setting up the tents and the chairs the day before.
That don't sound good.
I think they helped us with the tents, maybe the last, so we've got to, we've got to get the tents. We also, I didn't mention this at the planning committee, so please forgive me, it was in my notes, and I just forgot to mention it, something else that we wanted to do as well is a time capsule activity. So we wanted to bury a time capsule that day. We talked about getting Polaroid cameras, to where you can take a picture and put that picture in the, in the time capsule. We're also, when we, when we post it on the website, we're gonna ask that people bring their most 2019 item to go into the, the time capsule. So that's just, you know, an idea that we thought we could really make that day special. We are gonna have teachers, all the teachers are gonna be there, we're gonna have teachers and parents sign up to help us work the t-shirt sales, and with the kettle corn, and directing people inside and outside. We are also gonna work with the sheriff's department, I'm gonna get with Sergeant Reed and see if we can have some extra, extra officers there to help us with traffic flow. And I think they may even want to set up a fingerprinting station, I've got that, I've got that there as well, for the kids for IDs. And then, of course, we're gonna have multiple signups for parents where they can volunteer for our PTOs, our boosters, proctoring for TCAP, athletic, athletics, and breakout sessions for our mission and vision. So we just want to make sure that this is an opportunity for students, parents, community members to come together, the public to come in and see what their tax dollars paid for, and everybody wants to be in that new school, so it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. And if you all have any suggestions, we are very open to suggestions.
And every board member gets their own pair of scissors?
Yes.
And we gotta be party.
But, you know, I think we can work that out, you're just gonna have to get there real early.
Are we moving, just out here, are we moving anything for the, either the old, either the two former schools, the elementary and the middle school, to bring those two things together into the new school?
The plaques from the previous buildings will all be there, and it will not, it will not be there day one. The plaques may be, but we plan on, I have a history wall committee, and our plan is that we are going to design a mural and design different things to put on this wall, and we want it to be kind of near the gymnasium, the history of Boones Creek, the history of the mascot, the bar, and the history of Daniel Boone, and we just want to have that educational history wall right there where our gymnasium is. And we're working with the Boones Creek Historical Society to make sure that we do everything the way they, they wanted to.
Are you speaking of furniture though, or?
No, no, same question. I thought they had, could we invite both page directors as well, Dykes and Halliburton? If we could, please.
I'll read it out.
Did you mention Mr. Burleson and his?
And Mr. Street.
What about the contractor? What about Burwell?
As many, I'm, I'm open to invite as many people as we want.
Sure. Wouldn't you want to tell me you're open?
I'd love that, yeah.
Mr. Burleson said that, that all these guys out there working were invited, so.
Okay, well, as long, I mean, as long as Burwell knows that you're invited.
The lumber that was part of the bleachers in the old Boones Creek Elementary Gym has been removed, and when school starts, that will be made into trophy cases for most of them, as these will be built by students at Danny Boone.
Great. I'm assuming we will, as a board, will have it walked through before the stay, or are we gonna do that the morning of, beforehand?
We'll bring it in the roundtable.
Do you all have any more questions?
Not a lot of work.
Mr. Chairman, as the chair of the planning committee, I'd like to thank Mr. Hughes for all the work they've put into this, and I think they pretty well got it covered. And I move for approval of the planning report.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Director.
Okay, the annual board agenda prescribes that a transportation report be delivered to the board in July every year. It is in the drop box, and while it is required, there are no stipulation on what's in it. So we kind of made one up, and it's the same format as you saw it last year. If you have any questions, or if there's additional information you'd like to add, just let me know now, or text me, email me, we'll get you that information. But that is to satisfy the requirement, and since it is a board requirement, Mr. Chairman, I would urge and request approval by the board.
I can't find it, Mr. Chairman.
On the main, on the main document, showing us this transportation report.
Oh, with the bottom, there are more mine. You waiting for a motion to approve?
Yes, I need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Chairman, second, is there any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Ah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And according to board policy, I believe 1.603 personnel report is required each year. This happens in July. Dr. Keenan and her staff has put this together, it is also in your drop box. Susan, if there's anything you want to say about it, or you just want to ask your questions?
Well, I would like to point a couple, point out a couple of things. Most of the information is here, there are five, four items, five items that are not available right now because the evaluations are not complete. Our data is just being released, and the principals will be doing summative conferences with the teachers, and those reports that say that, where it says the evaluation cycle is not complete, those will most likely be available in October. And then the last one, number 11, instructional staff will present this information following the release of the report card. And I'm not sure at this time if we have a date for the release of the report card. It's in November, but everything else is current.
I can give one year old data, if anybody's interested, and I don't expect it to change. Thirty-three percent of our teachers are level five, an additional 34% are level four. Something along, I mean, nearly two-thirds of our teachers are above expectations or significantly above expectations.
How many is three?
Twenty, about 23%. We have 16 teachers that are level two, 12 and a half percent, and zero level one teachers. Now, that's, that's year old data, because that's.
So who, who helps, how do you help the ones that are below average?
We've only got 16.
How does that compare to another system or site? I mean, is that?
We do real well. We don't see really down deep data on other school systems. We just see us, frankly, though, because the state testing situation has been so terrible for so many years running, the General Assembly has taken measures to help teachers, and I would say that loud, has probably artificially inflated the level of effectiveness for our teachers. And I say our teachers, I mean Tennessee teachers, not Washington County teachers. It may be a little higher than it would ordinarily be if the tests weren't. They're going paper pencil next year, which can't not work, and then they've actually hired the right people, Berish and Publishing, for the year after. So this situation ought to alleviate itself. Our teaching faculty is as good as anybody's, and I think you knew that. That's how I'd answer that question.
Well, I would add something to that. When Washington County continues to lead all counties in East Tennessee, and loves, and several city systems in academic achievement, and our teachers score fours and fives, it's valid. So those high percentages of fours and fives, because we have great teachers.
We're also something, we're a trump school system, and I'm not talking about the president. If a teacher, a tested teacher scores a four or a five in their growth score, then that becomes their entire level of effectiveness score, which negates their achievement rating and their observation rating. They just get that score. So if they're level five in growth, then they're a level five teacher, period. We have the option every year of doing that, and we have never not done that in the eight years that team evaluation's been around. We figure, if a teacher's good enough to be a four or five growth, they're good enough to be a four or five teacher.
I wanted to ask about this. The number of non-teenager teachers, it shows 138. Out of that, at the end, 23 were non-renewed. Have they been replaced, or are we losing teacher?
Well, we had to lose some to make moves.
How many have not been, you don't really know?
About three or four, so some of those positions were purchased.
And that won't, well, that won't cause our classes to be overcrowded.
Washington area pretty close, and some of them were interim teachers that would not have been hired back anymore.
Okay, okay, so we're not going to?
Oh, somebody on the turn, they got some of the bad, that's in.
We won't know until our, their warm bodies are there that are today. Yeah, that's correct, got it.
Other questions for staff, for Dr. Keenan? And since that is a required report, Mr. Chairman, I would request a board approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah.
Okay, thank you. We have had, and are still having, a monstrous big summer in Washington County schools. In some places, you can't tell schools out. One of the really great problems we had this summer, and one I've had a lot of positive feedback on, is our summer feeding program. Caitlin Kite, not you, Caitlin Kite, please.
Grandview's our biggest feeding site. I think they serve well.
Judge Warren Grandview.
Judge Warren Grandview are our two biggest sites. That's Britta Cicero, she's also the manager at Boones Creek Elementary in the new school. She runs our summer program, so.
What's, what's, what's the most popular lunch?
Pizza. I assume.
Things never change.
Watermelon. Yeah. The watermelon this year from our program was so sweet and delicious, it was fantastic.
It was so good, they requested us to go buy some, and they wanted it.
Further into the year, probably.
It was really good fresh produce, so.
We do more than just feed them, don't we, Dr. Day?
Yes, we do.
All right, in your drop box, you've got some facts and figures that Dr. Hawkins put together about how this is funded, and how many people have been involved with summer instruction, and most of it was federal money. There's some really creative funding structures. But actually, what went on, let's see, Melinda's here, and Jill's here, and Carla's gonna talk about what kids have actually done reading and writing wise at summer.
So what exactly? In the background, you'll see a video of some of the things that took place during our summer program. So what exactly did we do with the 800 upcoming kindergarten through upcoming eighth grade students during their 20-day summer school? So the video can give you a good idea, but our educators, who were very excited to work in summer school at each of the seven summer school programs, they met several times prior to the first day of June the 3rd, and they determined an overall theme for their particular summer school program. We had such themes as, since a lot of our children liked camp, we had camp read-a-lot. If you go down the road a little bit at the next school, you had camp read some more's, you had STEM exploration, and you even had Survivor taking place at one of our schools, all right? But the focus through all of this, with whatever our theme happened to be, was English Language Arts, meaning, reading, writing, listening, speaking, thinking, problem solving, and yes, we threw math in there as well. We had pre-testing from a. We had pre-testing from each of our grade levels to post-testing, just to be accountable for our learning and to let the students, as well as the parents, see what benefit the 20 days did have for the students. We had guest speakers. Now, in your drop box on your listing from Dr. Hocken, you have a long list of the speakers we had. Bright Ridge came, and they shared about safety for electricity and safety for high voltage. We had visitors from the Nice Wonka Hospital who discussed water safety, especially with swimming, and then, of course, sun safety. We had a person who's starting a new business in Washington County called Vision Quest. And you'll see in some of the video or the pictures there, we had students who took virtual reality trips, whether it was to a particular country, whether it was to see mountains, whether it was to see certain animals. But the students really enjoyed that, and we're hoping to take more of those virtual reality trips with him when he opens his business then, this coming fall in August. We had, as you can well see, we had emergency service day. Our fire trucks came, and you'll see the helicopter there. I'll tell you something interesting about that. We had fire trucks where our students got to, of course, enjoy the water and then also see that truck up close. We had patrol cars came with our SRO officers, with our sheriffs departments, people who came and showed them the patrol car. Also talked about careers. We had the EMS vehicles in our K-9 division also came. But the Wings helicopter also visited. And I was there that day, but the helicopter wasn't there. And I went into one of our upcoming kindergarten classes, and they were telling me about the fire truck and so forth and so on. And then one little boy, so disappointed, his lip was out, and he said, "But the helicopter didn't get home. It got sick." And that is how they explained the fact that the helicopter did actually go down in a field in Green County on emergency and had to have a crane come in, work on it. And it did come back, as you well saw, but they were very disappointed that it did get sick. And I'm thinking, you know, how else do you explain something like that to an incoming kindergarten? And I really, and he really understood it, maybe as well. So I sort of like that. Anytime I'm getting on a plane, I'm going to hope that it doesn't get sick while I'm on it. We also had, as you can well see, we had park rangers who came. Sammy Sewell came. Eastman came with STEM activities with our students from making volcanoes to growing crystals and so forth. We had authors who came. And we had, of course, as you saw, the Washington County book bus came. And the children really enjoyed checking out books on the book bus. We also had, as you saw from your drop box memo, we also had family involvement activities. We had as many as 575 parents who visited us on various activities throughout the 20 days. We had such activities as how to help your child at home with reading or with different other activities, as well as coming into watching their child in a musical performance that took place. And if you want a more detailed listing of all of the different guest speakers or family involvement, you can refer to that memo from Dr. Hocken. Some of the ending activities that we had included pizza parties, ice cream parties, watermelon parties, cookouts, and yes, we had some more's. And we had water day, as you well saw, and the fire department came and helped out with that. We even had the Survivor Final Tribe Council Day. And they took their theme and worked through, even their ending activity, where the tribes would go out after they'd worked in their classes. The tribes would go out and meet. And it would be children, not by grade level, but just an eclectic group of students who worked together. And they problem-solved just real-life experiences and tried to solve, just like on Survivor and Bonded. And then on the last day, they gave basically different awards. The tribe with the best attendance, the tribe who did best academically, the tribe who did best in the activities that were outside. And they really carried their theme through as well. We even had at Boones Creek Elementary School, there were some extra chairs that weren't going to go to the new school. And the lead teacher received permission, and the children there were able to basically paint a personalized chair, reading chair, that they were able to take home to use as their reading chair at home. And that came in very handy because Barnes &amp; Noble, in particular, Vicki Combs, was able to give each of our students a complimentary book, children's book, that they would take home and have in their home to read or have reading materials in the home. But that's not all that took place in summer school. You know that we have talked in the past several months about two of our people, Melinda Carr and Jill Linder, who took the initiative to write a special grant with the Read to Be Ready Summer Program. And they received $54,000 to add to our summer program this year, with the focus at three of our schools for upcoming first grade, upcoming second, and upcoming third. And at this time, we had a lot of very positive comments. I think some of you have even heard comments from some of the parents or relatives. They're going to come and talk to you about how this $54,000 was spent with our children in Washington County over the 20-day summer school program.
Great job.
Okay, so we're here to talk about, well, to continue talking about the exciting things that happened this summer with Washington County students and teachers. We started working on this grant in October of last year. Can you tell we spent a lot of time together? We showed up, and we're color-coordinated. We have spent many months, many hours after school, working to make this a successful program in Washington County. $54,000 is not easy to spend, I will tell you that, for 20 days of learning. But it's very exciting. So again, Dr. Kite said that we had upcoming first, second, and third grade students. And our goal is just to motivate them and just get them to love reading. So our program, we didn't focus on math in our program as much. It was all about reading and writing. So our teachers are very literate in balanced literacy. They've had a lot of training around balanced literacy, how to work with students to increase their reading. They also attended a training in February through the State Department, a two-day intensive training. During that time, Jill and I planned together our units. So we planned four units of instruction that the students participated in, incorporating the ELA standards, as well as bringing in science and social studies for the students. Here are our nine teachers. So we had three locations, Boones Creek, Grandview, and Jonesboro, three teachers at each site. These are the teachers who were trained.
And that's an increase of one site from last year, because we grew from one site to two sites and then three sites this year.
Yes, last year we got $36,000, and this year we were awarded $54,000. And so here are some things that the $54,000 provided for our students and teachers. High-quality instruction through trainings, high-quality picture books. I'll just pass some of these around. These are the books that go home to the students and to the teachers, so the teachers can actually use these books when they start teaching in the fall. These books run about $17.99 apiece. So they're very rich. They connect with science and social studies standards, so bringing that in. And students are very interested in these concepts. We provided enrichment activities, so cooking, creating, field trips, all in along with our units that we planned. So they had a lot of hands-on learning to help motivate them to read. Fifteen-plus books went home with students. So one of our field trips was to Barnes &amp; Noble. And Vicki Combs, like Dr. Kite mentioned, she gave us a 25% off discount. So students were able to spend $120 each on books that day. And you'll see pictures of them later. Some of them said it was the best day of their life. Probably 95% of the students who went to Barnes &amp; Noble had never been there before, had never been to a bookstore. And it was so funny, because you had these little kids, and they were trying to carry out their bags of books because they were so heavy, and they got to pick any book that they wanted. One little girl says she loved to cook, and she actually bought a cookbook, the kids' cooking book.
So it was just... We had one little boy who's crazy over Star Wars, and so he only got like five books, but he picked the most, I mean, they were some of the most expensive books in the store. But that's what he wanted, so...
Do you need these back?
Yes, yes, we did. So with our program, we did have a lot of community support, especially Washington County through the daily breakfast and lunch. That way, we were able to spend the $54,000 on students. So I know Brenda did an excellent job. We contacted her, and we said, "We have four field trips, one a week. Can you provide us with a bagged lunch?" She not only provided the bagged lunch, but she provided the coolers. So the coolers were sent to the schools. So it was just phenomenal. Like we were saying, they were talking about the watermelon. Our students were requesting watermelon instead of cupcakes at the end of the program. We also had parent involvement activities where the parents come in, and the teachers provide the parents with books, and they talk them through how to do read-alouds at home with their students, what questions to ask, you know, why 20 minutes a day of reading at home is so important and vital to their success. And so it was just, it was fun. It was great. We have some testimonials that we'll share in just a minute. But our numbers, we try to keep them low so the students have individualized attention. A lot of our students in the program may not get the support that they need at home. A lot of them, you know, field trips were paid for, everything was paid for, all-inclusive. And so it was just something special that those students got to participate in, as well as they still got to participate in the fun activities of the regular summer school. But Jill, I'm going to talk about our success with the program. Like Dr. Kite said, we do pre-assessments and post-assessment, and Jill's going to go over those assessment results with you.
So one thing that is different about the Read to Be Ready program is that attendance was expected. In regular summer school, you know, kids have vacations and stuff. That's okay. They say come as many days as you can. One thing is our attendance is kind of expected because of the results go to the state, and then the state takes those results, and they create the stake data from that to write more grants, to get more money, so that we hope really we can continue this. So our attendance for the program was 82.9%. And the reason it was a little lower this year, because we had some kids that didn't show up, and so we had to replace the kids, so there were a few days that kids were missing. You know, somebody may have had a beach trip, and they were gone a few days and hadn't let us know that ahead of time. And we decided they really wanted to be in the program, so they just didn't tell us those things, and that happened, so anyway, it's okay. It's all good. 82.9% of the kids came. And they wanted to come back, as you're seeing in the testimonials. They wanted to be there. The parents were saying, "We can't believe our kids want to come to school in the summertime," at any other time, but they say, "They want to come. They get up in the morning, want to come." So in the program, we have assessments that are given. The reading assessment on accuracy and comprehension, and that is through an oral reading record. I don't know if you've ever seen an oral reading record. This is the sample of that. And in oral reading record, the teacher uses that form. And the child is given a sheet or a book to read that is a passage that they had never seen. And as they read, the teacher marks if they've got the word right or if they had an error, then they will write what the error was. And then you have that measure for accuracy. So at the beginning of camp, all the assessments were done within the first week and within the last week. So the blue over here is the first assessment was at 87.3, their accuracy rate, and it grew to 90.4% by the end of camp. So that continuous daily reading, we were just doing the number of minutes. The kids probably spent reading, the number of minutes was up like 1,800 minutes over the 20 days that they were involved in reading activities alone, and then the same amount for writing. So their comprehension rate through that, based on that passage, they are asked questions, and so the comprehension rate also grew. So that's what we want to see. We want to see kids loving to read and enjoying reading and building that fluency and building that comprehension. So that prevents that summer slide. The second area that we assess in is motivational survey. This is a sample of the motivational survey that the kids were offered. In this, the overall motivation is taken from an average of the self-concept and the value of reading. So they're asked these questions, and then that combination gets the overall reading motivation. So you can see there were all increases here of four to five percentage points in each area. So that's good. Anything that gets kids motivated is reading. One of the things that we wrote on the survey today was about a child at Jonesboro. He is an upcoming third grader. And one of the goals of Tennessee Succeeds is that all students are reading on level by the time they're in third grade. Well, these kids are maybe struggling, and that's why they were recommended for our program. And so when we were in there, and I was observing with our monitor, these boys, it was boys that were so into the text, and they were writing about what they had been reading about. And so I asked this one little guy, because he struggled so much with his fluency and his comprehension, and I said, "What have you loved about this program so much?" And he said, "I love all these stories. They've been so great." And I thought, you know, if he can learn a love of reading in just a short few weeks and its usefulness in his life in all areas, then that is major success right there. So that's what we want to see, and that's what we have seen throughout this campus growth in all areas. Melinda tested on the units that we had. We did two units over four weeks, and then it broke down, well, four units, but it broke down over these topics. So we embedded social studies content and science content in with our English Language Arts, using the balanced literacy of reading and writing and listening and speaking, because they were all talking to each other. And our focus was cultural history and economics, because the new social studies standards roll out this year. And one of the things that all students, K through 3, as a standard practice of learning, is that they have to be able to understand the past and make connections to the present. And so, and use timelines and that kind of information. So that was one of the focuses of that unit. But then we wanted to tie it with the science. So we took inventors, and all of the materials and the information stemmed around things that happened historically and scientifically in our area. So like, the kids ate new pies. They got to drink... Sandro's was this?
Sandro's.
Yeah, and...
Or C. Coats?
Um... No, they didn't do the...
Doctor Nud.
Doctor Nud. There was something else that they did. They just got to sample it. And then we sent them home. But those were things that we wanted them to see what happened in this area that impacts their lives today. So that is the reason for the units and the way that we wrote them. So we have some testimonials that we're just going to read through a couple. And then we have a video slideshow that takes you through lots of different areas that our kids do. Oh. Play. Uh-oh. Well... Okay, we might not get to watch it.
So this is a parent that joined us. Several parents came on our field trips. And we had a lot of parents at Barnes &amp; Noble, and she was just talking about the excitement of her child, how her child was hesitant to read, hesitant to come to summer school, and how Barnes &amp; Noble, that field trip, having all those books, getting all those books in the home was the best day ever for her child. And she was just very appreciative of the experience. Here's a lady who wrote a letter in. Again, these letters were just given to us. We didn't ask for them. But she's, "I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone involved in this wonderful reading program. I'm so grateful my child was given the opportunity to participate in it. He came home talking about the books he read and all the things he learned. He and I were amazed by all the wonderful books he was given to take home and will cherish them for many years to come. The field trips that he went on were enjoyed immensely, and I feel really enriched..." I was tapping it just how she said it, "the whole experience." "Again, I thank you and..." Again, I thank you and hope this program is offered to many more children in the future." Here's another one. My daughter Skylar Akers attended the Read to Be Ready program at Jonesboro Elementary School. I was amazed by the program and shocked when Skylar told me she wanted to attend summer school. Who wants to attend summers, who wants to attend school in the summer? I was so thrilled that she found some individualism and flourished in both academics and social life this summer. It was an amazing program all around. The teachers, the field trips, and the love of books were all wonderful. I would love my daughter to have another chance at this next summer. So that's just, we had other parents stop us. I think they were all just blown away by the amount of books that went home for their students and the quality of those books.
And then he'll go to the next.
But now, Dr. Flannery, they do get to keep the books, not like you.
The children get. The teachers also got numerous books and the teachers also got to spend $120 at Barnes &amp; Noble. The stipulation was they had to look at their standards and choose read alouds that went along with their pacing guide. So they also got to spend that day picking out high-quality books for the students for next year.
So this also transfers over into the classroom and the training that the teachers took in February and also the books that they get to use, go to their classrooms.
Here you can see writing activities. They always had writing with the reading, follow-up writing activities. This was the weaving project that went along with Weaving a Rainbow.
And their books that they used to look at the past and present and make connections. I think it was Electricity, how they did with no electricity as opposed to things we get to do with electricity. That was their trip to Rocky Mount.
That little boy right there, he sewed his own bing bae.
He was so proud of himself. I watched him. I was standing there with him and he was so proud of that bing bae.
Here's the bubble challenge. That's a hit. We've done that every year because students love it.
That was a really awesome experience. The kids read Mr. Ferris standing his wheel as he designed and made, and then they took marshmallows and toothpicks and they created their own Ferris wheels and they were so awesome. And even some kids, there were a couple kids figuring out how to do double Ferris wheels with that. It was really neat. And they made dumb ones. It was a lot of making dumb ones.
That's Hands-on Museum that finished out our unit on Inventors. And then, well, actually, we went to Warriors Pass State Park and Marty Silvers did some nature stuff with us. And we ended our field trip at the playground. So those students could see how they invented the playground equipment to meet the developmental needs of all students. So that kind of ended our Inventors study. There was our trip to Barnes &amp; Noble.
And look at these bags on the next. Look at those bags. They were so packed of books. I mean, those little kennel bars could not carry their bags out. They had to have the bigger kids help them. This little guy in the middle with the glasses is the Star Wars guy. He got, he got all the Star Wars. And that was their tweet that we sent for Barnes &amp; Noble. Thanks, Barnes &amp; Noble.
Yeah, we took over the store.
People were glad we left.
Do you all have any questions?
Thank you all so much.
Yes, I think this is a great program. Has it been approved for next year?
Sadly, the governor chose to zero fund Read to Be Ready.
Is there anything anybody can do? These parents that are sending testimonials?
They are. The state has said that parents are flooding them.
That's what it's going to take then.
You know, in Washington County, we have such a wonderful summer school program in place. I think the additional, some picture books in the homes is what makes it. And just the focus on reading and writing, but our teachers are doing that in the regular summer school program. It's just getting those books in the home and the field trips.
So we will continue to look at grants that maybe can help fund extra texts to be purchased for that time and any money that you all find and want to throw away, that we can use that for that purpose also.
It's not that he's resistant to it, it's just that's what he's humaning for right now, right?
No, he took it off.
He took it off.
Simultaneously putting 75 million tax dollars into private schools and everything.
And one thing that I read was that $10 million could continue to fund the Read to Be Ready Coaching Network and Summer School Program, but he had chosen to use the money for educational savings.
Yeah, vouchers.
With this kind of zero wire, for you all to know whether or not you can fund the Read to Be Ready program, when do you all normally find out about that?
We were awarded the grant in December.
So we started in October.
We started writing in October and November and then we found out in December.
But we can work on any kind of time. We can get things done.
Summer school will compete with or without this grant.
So how many children did you start, how many children was in the program?
The program was for 54 students.
54. So all together, we have 600 kids.
Yes, yes. But if you look at that, I mean, the summer school program that's already in place and starting all of those kids in some capacity with the texts that they need to be at home for kids to be able to have access to that, that would be an ongoing breakthrough.
We served approximately 200 of the 600 upcoming kindergarten students in summer school. And then we had approximately 100 in upcoming first, upcoming second, and upcoming third. And then we go down to about 50 to 60 in fourth and fifth, and then about 30 in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade throughout the county. So, and what was, what was good this year, the attendance stayed. A lot of times they'll come a few days and then it'll, it'll drop off a little bit, but it stayed up. I think that contributes, it's contributed to the food service program and then the different activities. And the teachers who are there, they love being there. You know, they love being there. And the kids know it and feel it and you saw the fun things that they experienced.
It's not the stress of the regular school.
You got a $5,000 grant. Did that cover everything or is there additional costs on top of that?
No, it covered the teachers' pay, everything. And we really spoiled the children. They went home with school supplies for the fall. I mean, everything was given to them.
Yeah, I think, you know, hopefully down the road, maybe October or so, the board needs to look at maybe funding that if there is, can't find any grants or anything, then let's keep it going.
The upcoming first, second, third grade students, because that's, that's the grade levels you want to hit because you want them on grade level by third grade. And just, just seeing how they increased in that 20 days and like she said, you know, usually students slide off in the summer, but that really.
Well, how about, Dr. Flannery, can you get with them, follow up with them and see what kind of grants they were able to get for this program? And if not any, that's fine as well. But I mean, if they were and they bring it back to the board, maybe September, October?
I have to feel like we could probably make up short following title one way. But we will be hiring a grant writer in the next few days. They started interviews today.
And I mean, that's awesome. I'm so glad we're doing that. But I still hope our teachers and instructional coaches and everybody will still look for their own grants and still work.
I hope our governor will see the error of his way.
Have you seen all the books in the hallway? That was from a grant. So that's going to go into the book rooms, so.
And that's a good shout out for Barnes &amp; Noble too. I've worked with Dicky too.
And she's, yes, and she's, yes. I mean, to give us 25% off per, you know, for the total purchase, it gave us about $30 more per child to spend.
And these kids are chosen, like you searched them, correct?
The school chooses the students based on their, their teachers, their teacher recommendations, the students who need that extra help.
You're searching for those kids who need.
Yes. It's a combination of through the principal, the interventionist, and the teacher. And so it may be a child who, they may be on grade level, but they have, something's happened in their home life where they have the ability to take it backwards and they just need a little bit more motivation. So it may be that or it may just be assessment scores or just students that they can't get motivated during the school year. They'll say, "Hey, can, you know." So it's just a mix, a combination of different things.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I'm going to grab my book. These will go into Jonesboro's book ring.
Anybody that thinks we don't do anything in summer around here is just not paying attention. All right, move ahead.
Dr. Flannery, may I say something about Dicky Combs at Barnes &amp; Noble? It was probably March and I received this phone call and it was Mrs. Combs and she was asking if we were going to be doing summer school again this year, that she wanted to help. We didn't have to call her. She called us.
Dicky Combs has been a great friend of ours for a long time. She's, she's all. Moving ahead, earlier in the week, in fact, I think maybe yesterday, I sent each of you a web link to a video on human trafficking. We're kind of under the gun time-wise. I hope you got to watch it. If you didn't, we're still going to ask for approval. I have to recommend, we have to certify every teacher receives certain amount of training on this every year. Well, one-time training and then it has to recur for every new employee going forward and we can't use it unless it's fore-approved. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I am requesting the board approve that video for use with our administrators and teachers.
I move for approval.
I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call book, please.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Dicky?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Danger?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Dang?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Aye.
Last thing, don't forget, we've got an Asbury graduation Thursday. Hope to see y'all later. Keep them happy.
Okay.
Can they hear? Say hello to Crowe.
Yeah. We don't have nobody to request. Board, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, everybody, we're going to bring her back to order. Committee records, athletes first. What am I missing?
Pre-K.
Oh, excuse me. Pre-K, Crowe, organization.
I can report, Ms. Conombe, I can report that it has been fully vetted by the State Department. The board really has two decisions to make. Carl, jump in. You need to decide whether or not it will be a fee-based or two-way. Uh, you need to decide whether or not it will be a fee based or tuition based program. This was intended, but you've never actually taken action. And, uh, let's just go with that first. Carla, you want to go ahead and talk about the money? You've done some calculations. Have you got that in your hand?
I do.
And you've got contracts?
I do.
Okay. Let's talk about the two issues.
Well, I don't know if we can say that.
You've got a contract.
I do have, I do have a draft contract.
Let's go ahead and have a look at it.
Uh, as Dr. Flannery was saying, we do have initial approval from the, uh, regarding tuition based pre-K program for the State Department of Tennessee personnel. We will be following the guidelines established by the State Board of Education regarding school administrative childcare. We have advertised and announced the pre-K classroom through various types of media, from newspapers, radio, flyers and so forth. Um, we are adding, it was recommended by a board member that we go to the old Boons Creek Elementary School and Boons Creek Middle School sign and put something up about pre-K registration on those signs. We're taking care of that hopefully this, right now, or the latest tomorrow. Uh, currently, we have thirteen children who have submitted applications. The deadline is July the sixteenth. We had five come in this past week and, uh, we have one week, of course, remaining. And then we need to let these parents know if they're in the program or not, so that they will know if they have childcare. And, uh, that's where your decision of first come, first served and then continue the waiting list and, and enroll as many students as we can until we get to twenty and then we, we stop at twenty and have a remain, a waiting list and then just simply, uh, add the name as soon as someone withdraws. Uh, we do have a certified teacher who has been hired. We have ordered the furnishings, the supplies, the instructional materials and technology to be in compliance with what's called ECRS and ECO, which is simply the standards, standards established by the, the State Department. Uh, the cost, uh, you had in your drop box, a, one of the flyers that we established. If you did not receive it or you can't find it, here's a copy. And in, in the flyer, it outlines the cost. The cost is basically a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week or four thousand five hundred per year. The program will operate ten months a year or a hundred and eighty days and it will follow the Washington County Board approved, uh, school calendar. Uh, the daily schedule is the one thing that would be different because of the state guidelines. The pre-K program is a five and a half hour program instead of a seven hour program. So the time would simply be for a pre-K student at Boons Creek Elementary School, eight o'clock until one thirty. If a parent would happen to need extended childcare, that would be available for, through the school age childcare program for an additional cost. Now, uh, outline, the other thing that we would have would be hopefully a one page of this, tentative contract that any child, any parent, uh, the child enrolled would sign. And it's simply, I'm going to take a copy of that and pass that. It simply outlines, and this is tentative because it would be a work in progress until after we've met with their parents who are, are, uh, enrolled in the program. But it would be signed by the parent or the legal guardian. It simply, uh, outlines an understanding of the cost, how payment would take place, the daily schedule, transportation responsibilities and so forth. We would have payment available through, just as the feeding program or the lunch program, the school age childcare, the online My Payment Plus, R check, but we won't know all this until we enroll the students, have the initial meeting with the parents and see what is easiest for them as far as payment and then we would work with them in that regard. We hope the first day for pre-K at Boons Creek Elementary School will be August the fifth. And you see the flyer, you see this, basically the, uh, rough draft contract. Uh, I'll be glad to try to any, address any questions you might have at this time that we know at this time.
How many students have you got in hand for it to be a break in? From a fee standpoint?
Well, it's, it's, okay.
We're seeing a capacity of twenty.
Right. It will take a couple of years for us to pay the board back. What, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside. All right, of that, it was tentatively budgeted, not knowing who the person would be or persons. If we had twenty children, we have to have one, a certified teacher and an instructional assistant. So basically you would allocate a hundred thousand dollars there for that sour, salary of those two people, the fixed tuition and possible insurance, health insurance. All right, so you set the hundred thousand dollars over here for basically personnel. That would be your reoccurring cost that you would have that basically with the tuition, it would pay for itself and just be self sustaining in a few years. All right, we have the other fifty thousand that we have for the initial setup, which would be your furnishings, your instructional materials and so forth. All right, we have ordered all that at this time. And at this time, we have in the ballpark of sixteen thousand dollars of that fifty and we think we're finished with that. So then we would need to over basically, possibly three years, that could possibly, three to five years, would just have to see how the salary is of the person and the instructional system, that type of thing, reimburse the board for the initial setup. And then after that, it's self sustaining.
Chad. I'd like to make a motion.
Wait a minute, we, we're, we're in discussion.
So it won't affect the, sorry, go ahead. It won't affect the cost if we only keep thirteen and we can't get up to twenty, you're, you're still okay? I mean, we, ideally, we're going to.
Right. We were approved when the State Department lady came to approve the site. She approved us for either a ten student or a twenty student pre-K program. So we can have the pre-K program with one teacher with ten students. If we decide and have the interest to go on to twenty, then we would have to have the instructional assistant and have that cost.
That's what I want to talk about. How do we go ahead and get that approved where we can do that? Hire the assistant to get the twenty kids? Because we've already spent so much money for ten kids.
She's just saying what she hits ten.
The cost of an instructional assistant is not that much. We'll be able to take care of that through the instructional line. But the teacher's another matter. You really need about sixteen kids to cover the cost of a teacher and an additional ID, even with insurance, maybe twenty-three, twenty-five.
Let me ask you this too. Um, on the hundred and twenty-five dollars, do, do we have to have either one or the other? Can we not have, can we not set it up where we have ten kids that pay? Because what if eight of your thirteen can't pay?
Well, they, the people who have currently applied know the cost and they're willing.
Well, how many would, how many would love to come and can't pay?
Nah, I don't know that. I don't know that.
I would submit, that's pretty cheap child.
Well, it is, but, I mean, if we're doing it to help the kids.
It's technically a childcare program. It's not an instructional program.
I don't think it'd be mixed.
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I don't know why you couldn't. I mean, life ain't fair, but it ain't fair to kids that don't get to come either, so. I was just thinking if we could do X amount pays, X amount don't pay.
Well, how, the thing about that is, how do you, my argument is, we got, we got pre-K at other schools that we don't charge.
Well.
And we got some that do.
That's what I'm saying. There's a mixture anyway, so why can't we just say, hey, because I don't want kids to not get to come that can't pay already when.
Well, they can apply to one of these other schools.
They have to have transportation anyway.
That's true.
What makes this school better than other schools?
Nothing.
It's new.
We have space.
You funded this out of your fund balance.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, why tell them, well, you can't pay, so you need to go to another school?
The purpose of it, I think, is to try to draw some, draw some sales.
But it, is, is, are the other pre-K programs not federally funded?
Funded through other grants, but they're not, they sure didn't come out of fund balance.
Right, so.
And if you don't charge tuition next year, you got to go back to fund balance. And next year, you got to go back to fund balance.
So we're not providing this for, I mean, somebody's paying the bill. We're not, yeah, we're not coming out of our fund balance to operate the other two pre-K programs.
Right. We're not doing it on.
So, so this one, we're, I mean, think of it as parents being, the federal government being the grantor. I mean, that's where the grant goes.
Twenty-two, Mike.
Well, I always thought we had the other pre-Ks based not solely on room, but where there was a need in the calendar.
There is, so some of them are special aid and then there are, since we receive money from the state, there's criteria on, I think it's economically disadvantaged.
That's kind of what I was getting at. I don't know how that works, but, I mean, that's what I was.
This program's unique and that you're funding it totally globally.
I mean, we're non, are we nonprofit?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, if we're not, it's either a business or it's nonprofit. I just thought it was helping kids, in the business to help kids.
Well, could you look in to see if it, it could be either or, if we don't get up to twenty?
We have, the, one thing we have not done, we have not advertised to parents that, that can pay. We have not done that in the flyer that went out. At the time, I was instructed it would be a tuition based and that's how we presented it.
I think the reason we did it that way is because we don't have no money. We don't have any money to start another. That's the reason we're doing this tuition base.
When is the next, where is the next closest pre-K? Because if, you know, if you have one that can afford and there is a need in certain areas in the Boons Creek district, they just can't afford it. I know they won't be able to. And I always thought this program was intended to give the leg up on the students to make, be able to succeed in kindergarten on that. But I, I understand the costs, I understand the fee and I'm not trying to argue, but I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate right now.
That's what we, that's what the federally funded is for, because that's what they give us the money for.
The VPK.
Totally geared toward, you know, financially.
At risk students.
At risk students. And this one that we are starting is, that's not our sole purpose.
I'm like Jason, you know, I know life's not fair, but I hate to think that someone would come to this and having a legitimate need for their child, the help, give the leg up and we're going to turn away or possibly have them. I know grade's not that far.
Bill.
It's already full, sure.
Go ahead, Bill. If you go back about twelve years, this system did not have room for a pre-K. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen years ago, the state was actually funding pre-K classrooms. When we used to be in Grandview open, all of a sudden, we had some extra space. We should have got rid of a lot of portables, but we didn't. But we had space to put some pre-Ks in. We were given a three hundred thousand dollar, correct me if I'm wrong here, three hundred thousand dollar grant from the Nyswamba Foundation to start our first two pre-Ks. And it's, it's been, as I understand it, for the lower income kids that don't have a chance to go to, to kindergarten anywhere, to, they're behind. They need to get caught up with the other five and six year olds, so that when they start in school as a kindergartner, they're not way behind. They're sort of caught up. And that was this board's discussion ten, eleven, twelve years ago, whenever it was. Through the years, several of us have always wished that we had a pre-K at every single school. We've never had the funds to do it, as I remember. It's always been a funding issue. It cost a bunch of money to get the classroom ready and then you got to pay the teacher. If you got twenty in there, you got to pay two people, okay? Uh, I wish we had one at every school. And I'm sure that Dr. Kite and most of our teachers, first grade, kindergarten, first grade teachers, we had one at every school to help those kids that are behind get caught up before they get to kindergarten.
Is there, uh, Dr. Kite, is there any instructional component in it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know if it was just a, okay.
Yes, and we have what's called TNLs. That's, that's the, uh, basically four year old standards in the state of Tennessee that tie right into the kindergarten standards. And we have to have particular curriculum. There are three choices in the state of Tennessee. Three curriculums that are approved and you have to have one of those through. And there's a certain curriculum. It is balanced literacy and it's focused on reading and writing and so forth, so it's strong.
Is that any, does that differentiate us? It's been a long time since I've had any kids in daycare. But does that, does that differentiate us from other daycare providers?
In my opinion, yes, it does. Uh, we will have a certified teacher who will be teaching a, an approved curriculum to the state and they will be also teaching the state standards for what is expected of a four year old. So, yes, I do think it does.
It may be, I mean, we said this is a really good value. It may be that, I'm not going to have Kate raising the price, but, you know, it may be a, a fee that should be higher.
And once we get established, this time next year, we have sixty people who want in the program. That would be certainly something the board can consider doing, yes.
And it's far from any daycare program I've ever, I mean, it's a, I mean, it is a bargain. I'm not saying this is not a bargain. I just wonder about those that could be left behind.
How does lunch and snack work for these kids?
Hard to say that one more time.
How does lunch and snack work? Because the other ones, we provide that correctly, correct?
If the child happens to be eligible for free or reduced lunch, it would be provided in our VPK grant programs or sometimes the parents, if the child does not want that lunch and they want to bring their lunch. So it's, it's an option, but there is a free breakfast and a free lunch if the child is on ele, income eligible for free.
So even though we are, it's, they're paying tuition, it is.
Now, that's in the VPK. That's the grant. In this, in this one, the children would be, they would be providing their lunch unless they show us when they register with us that they are eligible for free or reduced lunch, then they wouldn't have the free, or reduced lunch. That wouldn't be an automatic.
So will they be, will they be offered our cafeteria lunches?
Oh, yes, yes. The children will go into the cafeteria. Uh, you have to have certain sized table.
With a little bit of stairs.
And they will go into cafeteria, whether they bring their lunch or if they go through the cafeteria line, they will be eating in the cafeteria. Just like all the other children.
I want to know, would it be possible, this might generate, when we have that ribbon cutting, a lot more interest and there may be more people even, if there was, if we could kind of create a deadline to where we could still continue to try to get people that pay, but then, let's say we get to seventeen, we could still maybe do, but that would be hard to do for just three, no?
Which is better or not?
You couldn't do it, could you?
You would be answering those questions for those parents.
Because those three out of all that would apply would be astronomical. Okay, never mind.
Jason.
I would just, help me clarify what I asked to begin with. So if, at what point, so we don't have to vote to hire the assistant, you can just do that?
Sure.
When you need.
What about while we're asking?
But, I mean, so she comes in and says, we got seventeen, you're going to hire one?
Gotcha.
Okay, that's all.
Once we go over ten, by those rules and regs established by the Tennessee Board of Education, once you have more than ten children in the class, in the pre-K class, you have to have that second adult.
What I'm, what I was getting at a little bit was, since we're doing it as a business, we get over ten, what number makes, makes enough money to pay for the assistant? Is it fourteen? Is it eighteen?
Probably need all twenty.
Okay.
Because you're going to have to have about eighteen competition, six to seven.
I worry about the twenty some.
Chad. Would you entertain a motion now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I would.
I'd like to make one. Let's make this a, the pre-K program, uh, tuition based, first, first come, first served. That's my motion.
At a hundred forty-five per week. Just like it is.
Just what you got on the board. I mean, that's what we're advertising that we've seen, so just.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any more discussion?
Call for the question.
Question has been titled for. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
No.
Ms. Gallagher.
No.
Mr. Flannery.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Uh.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
No.
Motion passes. Excuse me. Uh, now, committee reports, athletics.
Should be enabled to read yours, which has been dropped for a while. We have things pending, so there's no recommendations at this time, so I would just like to be for approval of the, of the report.
Second. Do we have, did you have discussion, correct?
Yes.
Do we have to make a, do something about the new committee members that Dr. Flannery appointed?
They would.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. All those in favor of the report, please say aye.
All those in favor of the report, please say aye. All those opposed, now we have it.
All has her.
Nothing else on the...
Everything else is out, so they have to run it back, so...
Facilities report?
It's me. Uh, facilities committee met June twenty-seventh. Hopefully, y'all had time to read that it's been in your drop box, so I move for approval of the report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Uh, voice. All those in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
After reviewing the architectural drawings for the David Cracker Baseball Program's athletic facility, the committee recommends releasing bids for the project pending the attorney's approval. Is that form of motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Dr. Flannery, have you had opportunity to...
I have. I have created a document that includes what the law says, board policy, the state comptroller, the architect, and two separate opinions from our... I can send this out Friday, my reporter. I can script it right now. I've got copies there.
Well, um, could you give us the short version? Because I guess...
Who do you want to hear from?
Well, ten, we released the bids for the project, and for those that read the committee, uh, meeting, we were- the committee was in discussion of whether a contractor could put in a bid of one dollar or is it, or...
Yes, sir.
They can do that.
Yes.
Okay, so that'll help this committee, I mean, this board, as far as voting on this.
And if the board accepts that bid, then that individual is obligated to complete the project, that dollar.
Okay. Um, well, I'd ask that you maybe, you give those copies to everyone tonight as well. Let's maybe put it in your, uh... Well, I guess that's fine if you just wanna do that. Can get those out sometime tonight, the cop- those copies. How many you got?
I got enough.
I'd love to have.
Explain that.
So, this is the same, we gotta give them ten days for them to bid whatever they want?
Yes, sir. The only way to get a building is building yourself. And like the law says, there's no law that says that you can't do that.
So, now you're saying, let me ask you this. So, now you're saying that it's all right for our maintenance group to build something?
From the law, no board of education shall be prohibited from purchasing materials and employing labor with the construction of school buildings or additions to school buildings. You would essentially be serving as your own contractor, and your attorney would probably go list it. Because then you'd be liable for anything that happened in the building.
But it's legal.
It's legal.
But we are liable for anything that happens in that building.
Even if it's a man's building.
Contractor will build it. No, you're not.
Well, for the building, the contractor is, but whatever happens in the building, us anyway.
Mr. Flainer?
I talked to Scott Bennett about this yesterday, and I was asking him about it because of our CTE programs about getting them to help, which is basically employing your own subcontractors to help you do it. And he had a lot of, I mean, liability-wise, you know, it's a gray area or whatever, but, you know, he also said, you know, there was more to it than that. And I would like to, and I told- asked him if he'd be down there summer law, because I want him to explain this. So, I'd like to table this until we go down there and talk to Scott for us all to understand exactly. Because I, for me, for one, I don't want both to be able to do this, and I think it's a great idea. I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way. But I also wonder if we couldn't get our CTE kids involved to help us, you know? Think it would be, oh, things, it'd be helping them, plus, so I'd like to make a motion. We table this until next weekend and have it on our agenda for... Do we have an agenda for...
I suppose, pretty full, I think.
I didn't want to do it.
Well, I mean, I'm, and I don't mean this to be, but I mean, I'm just handing this piece of paper and ready to do something tonight, which, I mean, he gave me a lot of insight on that, so that's the reason I... Well, let's just see what happens.
So, what exactly is the question?
I have a motion to table it. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, okay. Roll call vote on the table.
Yeah, what was the motion?
He made the motion to table this, so we talk to Scott.
The motion before was to approve the send it out for a bid.
What, a certain project or any project?
The David Cracker Baseball. But we've already got approval, don't we, from the state attorney? That's what you got right here.
He's made the motion and got table in a second, so may I have a vote?
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Yeah.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Ms. Dellinger?
Confused.
Yes or no?
Yes, if we're gonna table, all right? All right, yes.
Yes. I wanna be certain about all this. That's why I want, I want to talk to Scott.
So, let's, let's wait till we get everything straight, because I'm like Chad. I think the CTE kids can help. I'm all in favor of certain things.
Would you like this put on the agenda?
I guess we'll have to, yeah.
Just for clarification, you talked about two different things, because when we put it out for a DA, the contractor would be involved in the third end. But in-house, we can do CTE.
We're going to discuss it when we get out. So, let's just hold off.
All right, putting it on the agenda for now, and let's discuss both projects.
Yeah.
So, do we treat both hospitals fair?
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll know coming out there what the new, you know, what we're going.
It won't have to be about a project. It'll be...
How we're gonna do it.
Yeah, in general.
Mr. Ganger, do you have anything else?
We do. Committee recommends approval of the rental, rental rates, and for them to go into effect August first, two thousand nineteen, except for the north and south side athletic complexes. Is that form of motion?
Second.
And your rental fees should be in your drop box, if you haven't looked at them.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have one quick.
Chad, second? Okay.
Question, yeah, a question on the Grandview, Ridgeview Athletic Complex down on the little table where you go to rental fees. Whoever's driving his train. One field for one day is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. But then, if you go to the second column for two days, I'm trying, why did, what's the number in green?
The, the new rate. The black is old rate.
Okay, okay. I thought, I thought that had to do with, and then there's a seventy-five-dollar cleanup fee, which is new as well. Is that right? Is that what the green is? Okay.
I need, I see that was right in line, both athletic directors did, so...
Any more discussion?
Well, I'm gonna question, wait a minute. One field, one day, one twenty-five. Two fields, one day, is it two hundred or two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five, green. The black's the old rate.
Okay, and the green's the new rate for that scenario. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And this goes into effect when?
Next year on the ball fields, but the motion is for the, the school properties to be in effect August one, right?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Aye.
It doesn't have date on the sheets, though. That needs to be added.
The effective date?
The effective date should be added to these sheets.
This is actually part of board policy, so we'll make sure it's dated properly before it's posted on one.
Thank you. It actually is in the minutes. It may be in the minutes, but it needs to be on the sheet, what I'm saying. It was in the motion? It was in the motion, but my statement is that it should be on the sheets themselves, the run sheet, right? Okay, okay. Somebody gets ahold of it and says, "Wait, it's in the minutes to understand the date." Okay. Next, Mr. Ganger?
Uh, committee recommends approval to tear down the shed in Chicken Coop, uh, by the baseball field in that back area to build a practice field for the football team. Is that form of motion?
Second. Any discussion?
But the motion's just to tear the shed down?
Committee recommends tear down the shed in Chicken Coop to build a practice field.
Well, but is it to build the practice field? Because they were talking about hauling dirt in and all kind of stuff, and there's a drainage issue there.
Upon approval of this motion, they will have to work through Dr. Flannery, you know, uh, it's in the minutes there, for anything they do from there on after.
So, the shed is the shed that's behind the barn? Any more discussion?
I believe that was Dr. Flannery's first construction as a teacher at David Cracker High School.
And it's still standing.
And still there.
Did you use students on it? Did you use students on it?
That'd be built down there. No, man, it's easy. There's no way. And it's still dangling. For now. Because I think I might've grew a nail or two in there.
Oh, hell, liable.
Good thing nothing's happening, buddy. I, I can handle it.
Uh, roll call vote on this?
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Sure, boy, I hate to, I hate to vote yes.
They give you a piece of wood or something. I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Ganger?
All right, uh, the committee heard a presentation from Mr. Kite about installing two trophy cases at David Cracker High Schools. So, the committee recommends approval of those two locations to install trophy cases. Is that form of motion?
Second. Discussion?
You think we could use the lumber from the Chicken Coop to build the trophy case?
No, because you don't want to bury them.
It's motion, pass it, though.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Flainer?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh...
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hammond? Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ganger?
Okay, uh, committee reviewed, uh, facilities priority list, and committee recommends placing the replacement of the cooling tower at Jonesboro Elementary and the HVAC controls at Jonesboro Middle to the top of the priority list. Is that form of motion?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Money coming from fund balance, or, I mean, coming from...
Let's take it to HE Desi.
HE Desi, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ganger?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Aye.
Mr. Ganger?
Okay, uh, the committee recommends Philip Patrick to serve as the board's representative upon the inspection acceptance of the new facility of Boons Creek Elementary School. Is that form of motion?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Can you just explain what that entails?
Board policy requires that they won't have a representative to be the lead person accepting the building on their behalf. And that concludes you going through the tutorial yourself and making comments, and so, but you gotta have a lead person, and Philip's the likely person. And I will concede that you did hire Tom DeBurleson to represent you in the construction process. Philip's on the payroll, is the answer.
We'll ultimately approve and accept the building, uh, myself. But if I see something I don't think you should approve, I'll let you know. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And if you don't see something?
I'm sorry?
No. So, if he misses something, we go back.
No, you're blaming it on the guy you're playing the one percent.
Roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yep.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ganger?
Aye.
Irvin?
I vote yes. Mr. Ganger?
Uh, that's all I got.
All right. Finance committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two things, and we'll pass that to you. First one is simply an update on the, uh, cost analysis of the athletic field rentals for the north and south complex. The next thing will be in a minute from our meeting this afternoon, and I'll give you a minute to make sure to get that. Since it was this afternoon, I'll read it to you.
One in the green?
Did everybody get a copy?
There's some.
There's some.
I got one.
Everybody got a copy? Finance committee met on Thursday, July ninth at four thirty PM at the Washington Department of Education's central office, the president for the meeting, with Chairman Philip McLean. Committee members Mary Beth Dellinger, David Hammond, Director of Schools, Dr. Flannery, Dr. Ellis Holcomb, and Director of Finance, Brad Hale. Also in attendance were Paul Masters, Caitlin Kite, and Philip Patrick. Committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of May nineteen. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of May two thousand nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. Committee considered a proposal from Director Flannery to move the athletic trainers from a ten-and-a-half-month contract to an eleven-and-a-half-month contract due to the safety... due to the safety concerns for the students. The financial impact is estimated to be just under eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered a proposal from Dr. Flannery to raise all Washington County Department of Education employees making less than ten dollars up to ten dollars an hour. Committee recommends Dr. Flannery has the county commission to fund this increase. The estimated expense is seventy-five thousand plus the food service portion. Committee recommends approval. Committee discussed a recent error that was uncovered in Skyward that is believed to have started in January two thousand sixteen at Skyward launch. This resulted in hybrid teachers' 401K portion of their retirement accounts being overfunded. This error has been corrected on a go-forward basis. The following motion was made. All retirement funds paid to, into W C D E employee accounts prior to seven nine two thousand nineteen will remain with the employees' retirement fund. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered a request from School Nutrition Director Caitlin Kite to increase school lunches by ten cents starting in F Y twenty. Committee recommends approval. That completes the report, Mr. Chairman, and I move for approval of the report.
Second. Oh, excuse me, I am so sorry. Do I have a?
A motion and a second.
A motion and a second?
Discussion.
Discussion? No discussion? Vote, voice vote on the report? All those say aye?
Aye.
All those vote? Motion passes.
Thanks, sir. Committee consider the federal, uh, general fund financial statement for the month of May two thousand nineteen, and committee moves for approval.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee consider the federal fund financial statement for the month of May two thousand nineteen, and the committee moves for approval.
Second. Second. Discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Motion passes. Mr. Flanery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee consider a proposal from Director Flannery to move the athletic trainers from a ten and a half month contract to an eleven and a half month contract due to student safety concerns. Financial impact is estimated to be just under eleven nine, and the committee moves for approval.
Second. Second. Discussion?
Uh, how many trainer, I mean, how many trainers does that entail?
And where would that come from? Eleven nine, we got room for?
If, there's some fluid funds in some of the salary line items, just calling them mystics. Eleven nine's no problem.
Okay.
If it was a hundred, then it'd be different.
Right.
Eleven nine, we'd tamper.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Motion passes. Mr. Flanery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee consider a proposal from Director Flannery to raise all Washington County Department of Education employees making less than ten dollars up to ten dollars per hour. The committee recommends Dr. Flannery has the county commission to fund this increase. The estimated expense is seventy-five thousand plus food ser- wait, food service portion. Committee moves for approval.
Second. Second. Discussion?
Do we know how much the food service portion will be?
We're gonna find out. There's some, some calculating left to do.
I'd like to. I'd like to tape this until the next uh, board meeting. And always, just for the simple fact that we need to have the numbers before we send this off, unless we're gonna have a call meeting before then.
I second that, 'cause I'd like the numbers for food service first.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to table? Roll call vote on the table?
Mr. Flanery?
What can I ask?
Yes ma'am.
Not with your tape?
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but that's the rules.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Flanery?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
I didn't hear. Five yeses, motion's table.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, next on the report, committee discussed a recent error that was uncovered in Skyward. I believe all of you know that Skyward is our software program for payroll and finances and so forth. Uncovered in Skyward that is believed to have started in January two thousand sixteen at Skyward launch. This resulted in hybrid teachers' 401K portion of their retirement account being overfunded. This error has been corrected on a forward basis. The motion was made in the committee that all retirement funds paid to W C D E employee accounts prior to two thousand nine, I'm sorry, July nine, two thousand nineteen will remain with the employees' retirement fund. The committee moves for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion?
So let me get this straight. We're not taking anything back?
No.
We're just gonna fix the problem and move forward?
We don't know how to take it back, and we think it would be a very in-depth, complicated procedure if we could. And the auditor? The aud- I, I'd like to add this, that the auditors didn't know how to take it back, but they recommended we do exactly what the committee has recommended.
That's just the right.
Well, let me ask a question. Why did it happen? What is, we, have we not had this problem to happen before?
No, not to our knowledge. Part of the problem was finding where the, where the error was created. And it was created in Skyward when it was first set up. Okay, when it was first set up, two thousand sixteen. But most of you around this table know that teachers hired after
fourteen.
January the first, two thousand fourteen, I believe.
July first.
July first, two thousand fourteen, are on a different type of retirement program than teachers hired before then. Okay? Uh, teachers hired before then are on a full Tennessee consolidated retirement program. The new teachers are on a new type program. Brad, let me let you explain that part of it. Please.
It's, it's called, the ones July first, fourteen forward, it's, it's under the umbrella of T C R S, but there's a portion of those funds that goes into a 401K, basically. Where the teachers before them, the plan's called Legacy, and all that goes towards the old T C R S plan. And, uh, so that's the big difference in the plan. And then, of course, there's more contributed under the old plan versus the new plan, so. Most of you, all of your new teachers, from January or July first, fourteen, would be under this, we call it a hybrid plan. Still T C R S umbrella, but it's funded differently. So that's your difference in the plan, basically.
And it got paid in at the wrong rate, and it was actually overpaid.
What was discovered was, so I'll, I'll try to keep it simple, but just talking about the hybrid plan only. There's a five percent bucket that the employer pays, and that goes, meaning the school, the board would pay, that goes into the 401K bucket, let's say, of that plan. Then the employee, the teacher, would contribute five percent of their own money, and that would go towards the old T C R S bucket. There is a two percent contribution that's automatically taken unless the teacher elects not to do it. That would go to the 401K portion. There's also another four percent bucket of that, that is now split based on something the state started doing about a year ago. And that goes to T C R S. But a portion of that four percent's not paid if you're a federally funded teacher. So it gets a little complex. So, this is just the one plan, I'm not counting the other plans, but. So what happened here is the, the employee portion, that five percent that the employee deduct, has deducted from their paycheck, that went to T C R S. Went to T C R S just fine. But the problem was that Empower Report was pulling that same five percent into the employee contribution for the 401K portion, so in effect, doubling the board's contribution. It was going into the same column as other employee deductions for this 401K bucket that were correct. And this portion only is less than ten percent of the overall expense, that's why it was so hard to find. So, uh, for an example, is last year, it's roughly around five point seven million that the system has paid out to Empower and T C R S. Less than ten percent of that is the Empower 401K portion. So, there were some other moving parts that camouflaged it in F Y seventeen before I arrived, and I came in at the end of F Y seventeen, but there was some rates that were not updated, which kinda camouflaged the issue, and then last year it became apparent, we've been trying to find it. And, uh, it kept expanding, meaning the gap kept getting bigger. We didn't know why, and this now makes sense, because every time we hire a new teacher, it's a hybrid plan, it makes the gap bigger. So, uh, with the help of auditors, we just, we did a deep dive into it and finally found it and caught it, so.
And I, I would, would simply say to the board members that was on here when we started Skyward, I'm sure you remember the chaos that we had in the transition, uh, with, with benefits that came out of the employees' checks and a variety of things, and the, and you guys. It was chaos. For several, several months, it was chaos. So I'm frankly surprised that the, the error is not worse than it is. 'Cause there was just a lot of moving parts in, in going over to Skyward. It was not the easy transition that most people were thinking it would be. It was, it was terrible.
At the end of the day, you've got a group of teachers that are, we call, under the hybrid plan. Now we're up to about a hundred and twenty-ish, now three and a half years ago, it's probably thirty or forty. But you've got a group that's had, uh, that's, they've had a little bit of excess fund put into their retirement account. It's not life-changing amount, I mean, it's nothing like that, but when they retire one day, they'll have a little bit extra in there. The other side of this is it will. We believe we're right, meaning me and the auditors that have looked at it. This should free up some funds going into next year, so.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
You have a second?
I do have a second, okay. Roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yeah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Thanks for explaining it.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that completes my report unless there are other questions.
We got ten cents.
Oh, oh, excuse me, yeah, I have to leave that off. Committee consider a request from School Nutrition Director Caitlin Kite to increase school lunches by ten cents starting in the F Y twenty. Committee moves for approval.
Next, second. Second, discussion?
And you said this was, uh, when she come up, you said this was mandatory by the state, correct?
Five cents is mandatory. Ten cents will preclude you from having to do anything for at least twenty-four months.
So that'll take it to what?
It's take, it's take breakfast from one sixty to?
No, yes, your breakfast, yes, K three, it'll go to two fifty, middle school, two sixty, high school, two ninety. Am I right, Caitlin? And breakfast, how much?
You're right, a dollar seventy-five.
One sixty, one seventy-five. Two forty, two fifty.
That's fifteen.
Fifteen, how much is that?
I have some more to hand out.
Please.
Yes. Yes, ten.
Do you want me to change it?
Our motion says ten, but it is fifteen. So I guess I need to amend my motion. The increase be from fifteen cents on breakfast and ten cents on lunch for elementary, middle school, and high school.
I thought the motion was for ten cent across the board.
I think it needs ten cents across the board.
It was supposed to be ten cents across the board, I do see that typo there. It should be a dollar seventy for breakfast, my apologies.
I withdraw my amendment.
So it is ten cents across the board? Except for school staff, right?
Yes, but you all don't approve that, that's not sort of proof.
Where we at?
I'm being a dairy.
I'm sorry, the only one that needs to be adjusted is the breakfast, it's a dollar seventy instead of a dollar seventy-five. That's a typo on.
So we, so we have a motion and a second, or what we got?
We're in discussion.
Oh, we're already in?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Being the dairy farmer that I am, what is, have you ever checked in on getting bottled milk instead of cartilage?
I ha- personally haven't got quotes for that, but I know it's a substantial increase that we don't want to incur, especially with the new five percent increase that we're doing and the other.
Well, let me ask you this. Now, I was informed by Suda that some school systems is putting in jugs of milk. Jugs, suspencers in the high schools. Do you know anything about?
Yeah, that's an option, um.
I mean, is that, is it cheaper?
Probably, it probably would be much cheaper, having done the pricing or the cost analysis on that. But there are those machines, and it's basically like a water machine or a Coke machine, and you're gonna.
You just put your cup up against it and get your?
So the kid would have, the child would have to get a cup and fill their cup up. I mean, some school systems are going.
Something like that would work in the high schools.
It's always something we can check into going to, if you'd like for us to do that.
You're not buying a bottled thing of milk, you're actually taking your cup of beer and suspensing out milk?
Yeah, so we would.
Yeah, I'm not sure about sanitary.
I'm sure it would be as sanitary as a Coke machine is at any. Yeah, they got a grant, I was, yeah, they got a grant through the Dairy Alliance to that. We also won that grant with the coordinated school health. We, but we're using it in gym and to increase breakfast participation, and they utilized it to do that with their milk at, that is correct. I mean, I would think it's as sanitary as any self-vending Coke, Dr. Pepper machine at Lake Subway or anything like that. Maybe cleaner, 'cause we clean better.
But what it takes a kid, what, I mean, I'm just saying. Cup they've already drank out of, up there.
Yeah, it would, there would have to be some regulation on, they get one cup and one refill. They wouldn't be able to go up there and get refills, obviously, 'cause that would put us out of our eight ounce fluid ounce of milk, which is all they're allowed, um, for that by regulations. But I mean, I could look into it and give you some information.
Well, I'd like to, I, I'd just like to know.
Yeah.
That's all, I'm, I mean, I'm not asking for anything to change. I'd like to know, because.
You're gonna keep your chicken coop and you want a glass of milk?
Since we went to the new vendor, um, we haven't had any complaints like we were having prior. I know that was your concern originally.
Yeah, but you know, I'm looking at consumption. So, and we now use two percent, right?
Yeah, we're allowed to use.
Are we using two percent?
I don't think we've transitioned to it yet, it was just, and we already had a bid in process that would have to be revamped, so this coming school year, we revamped it to include that in our bid. But they changed it mid-year. But they changed it mid-year.
I know, they went from one percent to two percent, that's through, you know, the USDA grant, yeah, USDA. So have we, two thousand, or when we start school, are we gonna have two percent, we gonna have one?
Yeah, we'll have two percent of it.
That's what, I'm sorry, but that's what, I feel like the kids... I can't support one percent, I tell you, I'm sorry.
Just support our ten cents raise, that's all we're asking for.
I'll have the question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm still discussing.
You're on something other than what the motion is.
Well, it's, it could be a raise, it could cost more money, I'm gonna ask, so, that's why I wanna ask.
I call for the question, I second that.
I had the woman up here to ask. Okay, question's been called for, roll call vote, please. Sorry, hey.
No, no, it's quite all right, thank you.
Mr. Gangner.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yeah.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Stellinger.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Fink.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Is that all we have, Mr. McLean?
Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, staff reports. Dr. Karen.
I'd like the board to consider once again the proposal from Scholastic Insurance Incorporated. They, this is that optional insurance that families can take. All we do is just distribute the information for them. I've been in this position since 2001, and the rates have been the same since 2001. And I don't know before that, how long they were in, they were before that, but they have been that way for eighteen years now, I guess.
What are the rates and what do they cover?
Um, it's dropped in your box, I'm sorry. There's a school time plan, a twenty-four hour plan, and a high school football plan. Same thing we do each year and offer it to the students. They take up, they take care of all the paperwork, we don't handle money, we don't handle anything.
These are the annual rate or the monthly rate?
Um, you know, I'm not sure. Annual?
Can I take this out?
I'll get you a brochure.
Just kidding.
Do we, do we have, typically have good participation?
Um, I do not get statistics anymore, I used to when I was principal. And we had very good participation. And that was even after the board started purchasing insurance for, liability insurance for our student athletes and our students.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mr. Gangner.
Uh.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Stellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flaner.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Fink.
Yes.
Okay. New business, WCEA.
It's not really new business, I just want to reiterate what I said at the last board meeting. Appreciation for all the hard work that went toward the two percent raise, because I know that touched everyone's department and chairman heads and everyone. So, thank you for the two percent raise for employees. It's greatly appreciated, and glad that the commission approved it. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, round table. Mr. Gangner.
I look forward to starting the school year coming up, currently, but it's already coming around again. Really looking forward to opening up a new school. It's gonna be a little bit of a shot of the arm for the system, so that's a good thing. It's been a long journey, like three directors of schools and many board members have a journey. So, I'm glad it's finally here, I know some people thought it'd never get here. But I was probably one of them, but glad it's here, glad everything's coming together well. I think it's gonna be awesome, awesome school and a good thing for our system. Looking forward to summer law, it's always a good learning process for the board and I think the new board members will probably get a lot out of it. It's probably, I think, one of the better things we go through TSBA, so, looking forward to that. That'll be it.
Mr. McLean.
Looking forward to summer law. Also, my apologies now that I will not be at the ribbon cutting, I'll be out of country. Productive meeting, that's all I have, sir.
Mr. Flaner. Um, great meeting. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Fink and all the other people that are getting hired this time of year. Congratulations, and wish the best to those who went to other places or retired or whatever. And we're just obviously blessed to have so many good teachers and good people in our schools. And I too, I'm ready for the grand opening. And just appreciate everybody's hard work down here, I know Brad, especially the finance department, not that they're the only ones doing the work, but the finance department being shorthanded and everything. Glad to see Cindy come back, or glad to see her back to almost full staff. But I know everybody's been working hard, we just appreciate it. Mr. Hannes.
Uh, good meeting, appreciate everything this system is doing. I'm really proud of the summer school program and what we saw here tonight and heard from Ms. Leonard. And I'm very pleased of the summer feeding program. And I appreciate Ms. Kate and her staff and all the cafeteria personnel for the job they're doing.
Mr. Day.
Um, good meeting. Really enjoyed hearing about the summer school program and food program. And looking forward to opening the school, I know everybody worked hard on that. It's an awesome thing, hopefully we can now focus more back on Jonesboro, what we're gonna do there.
Mr. Meredith.
I was impressed with the summer school activities that we had. Ready to read?
Read to be ready.
Read to be ready program. Hopefully we'll find a way to continue that next year. Boons Creek's gonna be an exciting event, the ribbon cutting. Keep Ms. Hughes in your thoughts, she's got a lot of planning to do here between now and then. Hopefully all the stars will align and we'll have a great day. We are now in a new year, which means the old year's finished. And good luck to Mr. Hill and his staff as the audit commences. Sooner it's over the better. And I'm looking forward to being at summer law and, you know, just talking about the things our school system needs to do to move forward and become the best school system of all school systems, I would say.
Congratulations.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Stellinger.
Congratulations to Dr. Flanery for a contract extension. And the summer meals program provides a need for our students and our families, wonderful. Read to be ready is a great summer program, and I hope it's funded next year. I appreciate Ms. Hughes and Mr. Christian for their hard work this summer in opening the Boons Creek School. While I'm excited about this new school, I don't want our board to forget about Jonesboro and their needs.
Mr. Cannon.
Um, I just want to say that I am involved in a program through my church that gives food to children in need during the summer. And because of our program in the schools, they actually now, what we're giving them is becoming their supper. So I know that my little children that I see every two weeks, I know they're being fed three meals a day. And that just, that really does my heart some good because, once you get to know these kids, I've done this for fifteen years, and once you get to know them and your heart just goes out to them and you get involved in their ups and their downs. And so I know that several of them have come in and said, they've come in and said, "Mrs. Matt, I wanna tell you a secret. I'm not eating that for lunch, I'm eating it for supper." And they'll say, you know, they'll tell me where they've been to get, and I just think it's really nice that I know that those kids are taken care of this summer, it's really wonderful. The Read to be Ready program, this board has expressed, you know, their concern about literacy in the K through three. And I really hope we can find a way to continue that program and make it larger because it's really going to, I think, impact all the things that we set towards our goals. I really think you'll see some leaps and bounds because of that program.
Mr. Flanery, do you have any words of wisdom you'd like to speak?
Glad to be here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. July the eleventh, five o'clock, Asbury graduation. Come if you can. July the twelfth, noon, retirement luncheon. Come if you can.
That's here, correct?
It's here. How many?
We need to give you a heads up if we're coming or not.
How many we got retired?
How many? Thirty-six.
Okay. July eighteenth through the twenty-first is summer law. Is everybody going? You're not going? Everybody? Okay. August board meeting is gonna be changed to the eighth of August.
Why aren't we doing that?
Because it's just like the first of August, and everybody's trying to get everything started for school that week.
Well, it's gonna start.
The fifth, we're gonna move it to the eighth.
Would it not be more hefty, heck, if the first week of school than before the school?
I wouldn't think so.
Just asking.
Was that a request from the board?
I'm not planning on that.
It's a request from me.
Well, I mean, I'd like to leave it myself, but-
I would too.
We were told to keep the first Thursday open of the month, by you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, this is crazy.
Okay. I will not be here for the fourth. We need to have a call meeting for policy. Can we also add that ten dollar hour raise to that meeting night?
We've tabled it, we can't talk about that.
I'd love to put that on there to talk about what we're trying to give our ten dollar hour teacher raise. We can't talk about it.
We can't, we talk about it next week.
Somebody has to bring it off the table before we can talk about it.
Can I take it off the table so we can ask? You can't even make a, put it on the-
Yeah, you can do it this way. You can move the tagging out of the bottom. We're gonna make a motion around table.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a vote on the board meeting?
All right, that's, somebody wants to make that in the form, well-
We can have it, it's around there.
You sent out, I got an email the other day about changing it to the eighth.
Yeah, I sent out a request to change it to the eighth, and nobody responded.
I did.
Okay. Did what, you did? Okay.
I told Jennifer no.
Okay.
I told her yes.
I mean, that's-
Let's make both of them.
What was the vote, Jen?
I didn't hear from anybody.
Oh.
So-
I'd like to press the vote on it. We voted on everything else, we did.
Y'all wanna vote on, I'll put that in, you can put that in the form of motion?
I do. Now, why can we vote on this?
We can't make motions at round table. It was rejected, that ain't right.
Well, I think we have before, but I understand what I said, yes, I know, I made the rules.
It's a rule, it is a rule. But we do have children.
The meeting will be on the first of August. I made that rule, so. I've missed two board meetings, this will be my second board meeting in the last six, fourteen years, so. That's, that's good. So I can't say y'all wanna talk about hourly wages at the policy meeting? No, but you can call, you can call me and I will put it on the agenda for our call meeting. I will make that, because the chairman can do that.
Are we not allowed to vote on anything that are retiring or-
Yes.
Well, can't we talk about it then and vote on it?
All he's gotta do is bring it back up off the table. It can't, yes, it can't go on the agenda because it's, maybe they'll take it out. But not right, not flatter.
And we can be prepared to give you information because- But yes, the retreat is a regular meeting, it was time to take action.
Would there be a policy? Would there be a policy?
You put in any wanted policy, there's nothing here right now, company.
So how do you, how do you make that?
Statute says that you have to create a salary schedule, which is essentially what you'd be doing is revising the salaries. And no salaries, no hourly wage, we're giving a lot of it at ten dollars. And you can do that if you're-
We need to find, are we need to find an evening for the policy?
Yeah.
For the whole call meeting, not just the-
Just for policy.
Well, how about the-
Oh, you're still looking for a date?
How about the twelfth through the sixteenth, that week? August, we're gonna have to wait till August.
As long as it's not during the fair night.
That's before the fair, isn't it? Oh, you mean Greencamp.
Correct, you, oh, I believe.
Where is it?
Starts at seven.
That would be the week before that.
Starts at nine p.m. with the fair.
So could we have it the thirteenth? Does that fit with everybody? Tuesday the thirteenth? I'm not hearing anything, so, is that good, up or down? August? Thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
Catch five? I'm sorry, I'm taking a few of the same policies.
Well, you know, I noticed you have.
Ashley's over here.
Ask you, thanks.
Then you're Ashley. Five to ten.
August thirteenth?
Okay.
Five o'clock? Really serious, it's five o'clock?
Yes, right?
Five o'clock.
So we're not gonna meet for two weeks?
That's crazy.
We've got the, next week.
Board retreat? I won't miss you guys, though.
No, we'll see next week. We'll make up for it.
Graduation.
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 Fine.
We all gonna meet?
No, I, I don't.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. Oh, you guess that?
What about tonight?
I don't know. I ain't too sure. I wanted to adjourn yet. Call meeting, policy the thirteenth. Now it's my roundtable discussion. I was walking through my graveyard that's on the farm last week and I walked up on a grave that I didn't know was there. And it said that I had a state senator buried in this graveyard. And his last name is Brown. He's part of Jacob Brown that signed the peace treaty with the Indians years and years ago. But he, his son was a US Senator and he's buried on the farm. And I do not know that. I thought that was.
There's field trips. Field trip, were there?
Anybody else have anything? Eighteen, eighteen sixty-nine, I think. Maybe something like somewhere in that range. Right after the.
Are we not gonna go to Jones, or the Boons Creek School here before the twenty-seventh as a board?
Ask whoever y'all want to do.
What y'all think?
I hope we go individually.
I would prefer to go with the board, so. Give me a date.
When did they say that it would be?
Sixteenth it'll be open for teachers. Do we wanna, or possibly.
Hopefully.
So how about we go, you wanna go the fifteenth before they get there, that way we eat their way? Or?
Or wear your work clothes. Get there when they're there.
Yeah.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna be here for lunch, can we deal with after lunch? Is that not different?
How far?
Chad says that.
What about doing on the eighteenth?
I'm going, we're going to summer law.
Well, and I'm.
Be leaving early.
At summer law.
That's my day to show.
That's family day.
I'm leaving early too.
I'm leaving early.
That's my vacation.
About seventeen. I'd love to know.
Seventeenth is good with Dr. Flannery. What about the rest of us? Four?
A clockish.
Four o'clock's even better with me.
Works for me.
Mitch?
We're all good.
Four o'clock, meet at the new school on the seventeenth. Good? Miss?
I just wanted to remind, you'll be receiving something, but on the twenty-fourth of July, you will be invited to the newly hired teacher luncheon at noon at Boons Creek Elementary School, the new Boons Creek Elementary School. So that's the twenty-fourth. Again, it will be all new hires, principals, assistant principals, supervisors. And you're always invited. And I thought while you were putting things on your calendar, you might wanna make note of that as well. And you will receive an invitation.
I think Jennifer had already sent it out, hadn't she? No, you haven't.
Jonathan.
That, no, no, it's gonna change this year. It will be at the new Boons Creek Elementary. It has been, it's that luncheon you come to it, just for middle of the past.
Twenty-four.
Well, twenty-four at that noon.
Well.
I guess we'll be, I guess we'll have it next.
This is twelve.
May what time, I mean, what, what name?
The July sixteen.
Doctor Tyson in the cafeteria.
The new Boons Creek cafeteria, yes.
And the SRO luncheon, the sixteen to twelve.
I, I don't have that on my list. SRO luncheon?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm, I wanna ask everybody something here. Are there another date in August that we can meet and have a board meeting? That would work with everybody? I'm gonna be honest about it. I don't wanna miss a board meeting.
Yeah, but he's, so every time somebody's gonna be out of town and they have to miss.
Well, we have moved board meetings because I ain't been to the beach since.
I know someone right over there that have missed because they were on vacation and they just missed. I mean, that's just part of it.
Well.
And you're the one that's sitting here and told us, guys, the first Thursday of every month, open it up on your calendar because that's when this board meets.
Well, we, we've also missed these meetings too. I.
Not for personal, personal vacations.
That's it. I'm not gonna argue with it.
What about the sixth?
No, I just, I just have.
How about the sixth?
I'm asking as a, as a favor. I, I'm just, you know, I try to be at every meeting. I don't miss a meeting. And I work around everybody else's schedule. And, and this is something that I have asked to do, so I won't be here. So, Annette, it's your baby. I missed one for my girlfriend's funeral, daughter's funeral, and I'm missing this one, so.
It's your meeting. You can change.
Well, why not?
No, I'm, I'm asking the board. If the board could not support that, then I'm not gonna do it. I'll, we'll have it on the first.
Why don't we vote?
I'm not, I'm not gonna vote because we're not having votes at roundtable. So, the meeting will be on the first. Meeting adjourned.